Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for March 4th. It's good to see you, a proud of folks here tonight. So we will go ahead and get started. Commissioner Lohhan is going to give the invocation and the pledge of allegiance tonight.
If you would bow with me, please, if you feel so desired. Father, we do thank you for this day of sunshine, part sunshine. We do thank you for the rain. We thank you for the many blessings that you give each of us each day. We know that you are the Creator, and we thank you for the creation you have created. Just be with our board today as we make decisions for Stanley County. And we ask that those decisions would be in your will and not our will. These things I pray, in Christ's name, amen.
For all who live in the United States of America, and to a republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move forward with approval of the agenda, I would like to make one comment. Commissioner Jordan is actually on speakerphone with us, so if he has comments and someone has trouble hearing him or would like him to repeat something, we'll try and get a microphone closer over here. You should be able to hear him, though. With that, is there any additions or changes to the minutes? If not, we'll seek approval. Oh, I'm sorry, the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, is there a second? A second by Commissioner Alman, sorry. I was doing good tonight. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item one on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for the Coggins Road closure request. Our presenter is going to be Mr. Will Taylor. Good evening. I'd like to introduce Mr. Jimmy Faust from Culp Lumber to talk about the closing of Coggins Road.
I don't know what all we need to speak on, if revisit what we talked about last time. It's a portion of Coggins Road. It's about 2,500 linear feet, and we're seeking to close that area to allow for growth for the company, to get, you know, for public transportation, not to go up and down that road. It's two industrial sites, on heavy industrial on both sides of the road, so we are just seeking to close that portion of the road.
It's primarily about the safety of the general public to route the traffic of log trucks to a new entry point on Highway 52 as opposed to using old Highway 52 through the middle of the town of New London, as well as the economic development of our county and the growth of Culp Lumber. And this is a project that can hopefully create new jobs while also making the general public safer, and we thank you for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you, Mr. Faust. Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, now I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against the road closing on Coggins Road? For or against? Yes, sir?
There'll have to be two, obviously, or four.
If you want to speak for or against it, you can come forward.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Palmer. I own, my wife and I own Fast Stop in New London, and as well as Bait on Aid across the street. We witness, you know, we're there from 4:30 in the morning till 9 o'clock every night, so we witnessed the log trucks constantly coming down. I mean, Culp routes any truck that they own, and they move them around and come up the backside, but anybody who's subcontracting, they come down the road, we witness running the red light, you know, the speed limit's 25. It's hard to drive 25 in any kind of vehicle, as anybody knows, but, you know, I think it's a thing of safety for us to limit those trucks, and right now they're bringing about 100 trucks a day, and probably 30 of them come down Main Street. I think, you know, infrastructure-wise, I think the roads will be better, less bark on the roads, and a safety issue, so I'm all for it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I want to clarify one thing first. I'm Tate Daniels. I'm here as a citizen of New London. I am not speaking on behalf of the town of New London because I am an elected official. I'm here as a citizen of New London. I have witnessed all these log trucks. I'm 66 years old, and I have lived in New London all my life, and every day these log trucks come through town, and it's just like David said, they, none of them drive 25 miles an hour, and I have also witnessed them, when the light turns yellow, they realize they can't stop, so they just keep right on going through the red light. And it does do a lot of damage to the highway, and we would love to see all this traffic out of town, and anything, if you please consider this, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak for or against the closing of Coggins Road? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution in support of closing and abandoning a portion of Coggins Road.
Motion by Commissioner Alman, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number two tonight will be the Airport Authority Board Appointments. Our presenter will be Mr. Ken Swerengen, the Airport Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. As you saw in your packet, we have two members of the Airport Authority whose terms will expire on 31 March 2019. At present, and in your package, was applications for the nine individuals that expressed a desire to seek those positions, and I'll read those. Mr. Scott Booth, Mr. Michael Harwood, Mr. Joseph Burleson, Mr. Philip Burr, Mr. Tony Dennis, Mr. Terry Eford, Mr. Ross Nealon, Mr. Art Whitaker, and Mr. Michael Williams. And it's a pleasure of the board to appoint as you see fit.
Thank you, Mr. Swerengen. What's the pleasure of the board tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Lohhan?
I would nominate or recommend we reappoint Scott Booth, Mike Harwood, who are both current members of the Airport Authority. I know the Sheriff Mike Harwood has been a commercial pilot in the past, and I think Scott has a pilot license, but they're well aware of what's going on at the airport, and I would nominate those two to be reappointed.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohhan. Is that a motion or a nomination?
It's a motion.
All right. There is a motion to appoint Scott Booth and Michael Harwood by Commissioner Lohhan. There is a second by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any discussion on the nominations? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item three on the agenda tonight is the EMS Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant. Presenter Mike Smith, EMS manager.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We're here to talk to you about the Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant, but first we want to kind of give you an overview of why we sought this grant. We have a community paramedic program we're working on about a year. Takes about two years generally to get that program up and running. Of course, you know, with the opioid crisis, that kind of sped things up. We had a chance to seek out some of those grants and help sustain our program. So what is a community paramedic? I know it's a new thing here. It's a new evolving model of community-based health care in which paramedics function outside their customary emergency response and transport roles in ways that facilitate more appropriate use of emergency care resources and/or enhance access to primary care for medically undeserved populations. We got kind of three goals with this. Develop partnerships with other community-based health care and mental health providers, which we have already begun to do, specifically with the local peers here, Monarch, and also local health department. Develop mutually agreed upon protocols, assess the behavioral health consumers to crisis to alternatives other than local emergency departments, meaning those who are in opioid crisis, instead of just generally taking them to the ER, we can now take them directly to the services they really need and get them those helps versus them going to the ER and then being turned back out, you know, with no help. And to improve health outcomes among medically vulnerable populations. Our model basically has five components. With this grant, when I go through the components, we mainly will focus on two out of the five. The first one's primary care services ordered by a physician and conducted in the patient's home. That is a whole separate part of being a community paramedic, where we deal with, we decrease the readmissions to hospitals and keep those reoccurring patients going back within 72 hours, and we keep them home. This grant will focus on these two through five. Community-based prevention services planned and provided in concert with local public health department, which we have started, I believe, on the first grant that we've got with them. Second was crisis management. We provide triage, assessment, immediate behavioral health crisis needs, onsite intervention, and referrals to your local management entity, and that being Monarch, Cardinal, local health department. So we can start, our intervention is there, whereas before we come, we just picked them up, took them directly to the ER. Community education, they will be heavily involved in community education because many of people are not aware of this or actually how things work, including a lot of us, ourselves, leaders in the county. It took a lot to change my mind, I know. So we'll be doing a lot of these preventative and educational awareness events. Fifth, facilitating access to health resources. We have a broad range of healthcare services here, and increasing more, just like the Suboxone Clinic and Monarch has now with their grant, so we have that. That's a luxury here now. We can take them straight there, so we can do these interventions on scene. As soon as they have an overdose, instead of just leaving them there, taking them to the ER, we can go ahead and do that intervention, get them the medical treatment they need them, get them straight to that facility. So Blue Cross Blue Shield. They put out this grant addressing substance abuse disorder and opioid epidemic in North Carolina. It was actually a $10 million grant. $2 million went to North Carolina. It was released, the award was released on January 29, 2019. This is the things that they looked at. Nonprofit and public health organizations took part in the competitive grant process that will allow or will support efforts to prevent, treat, and help people recover from opioid use disorder. Out of this, they made several statements. Three people die every day from opioid overdose, and that's just in North Carolina alone. They also made the statement, "We are proud to invest in these five organizations that are working so diligently to combat the opioid epidemic in our state, and its far-reaching impact felt by nearly every North Carolinian." With that, this is the most I've ever seen a community come together, as far as departments, peers, local services. Selection was based on each organization's ability to create system-level changes across prevention, treatment, and recovery, which mirrors Blue Cross North Carolina's three-pronged approach. Public awareness and education, developing and adopting policies and procedures to ensure safe prescribing of opioid medication, and appropriate access to treatment for opioid use disorder, which we have already started doing, and we've been doing that for several months, just putting those together, working with our other peers. Encouraging well-informed public policies to prevent opioid misuse, abuse, fraud, and diversion. Out of the grannies, we were the only EMS system in the state to get this award. These are the five people that they chose, or five entities. We were the only one. We will work with Stanley County EMS. We're working with Pacific Institute for Research and Evaluation to help with the grant, to help distribute and manage the grant. It also will focus on enabling first responders to offer overdose survivors treatment beyond immediate resuscitation. As part of this two-year project, Stanley County will train community paramedics to administer Suboxone to opioid overdose survivors and assist in getting survivors to a long-term medication-assisted treatment program. This is a two-year term contract. First year will be $169,839. Second year's $210,226, total $380,065. And with a lot of things that got us this grant, these are some of the things that just happened to us locally here in the county. There was a 263% increase in overdose contacts for Stanley County in just 2018. 200% increase in county deaths from 2017 to 2018, secondary to just overdoses. The state puts out these, they're pretty descriptive on what we do in the counties across the state. This is where we rank six months in a row, and this is the information they put out. You can go straight on their North Carolina site and see where we land on these. The same, they'll do the ER visits as well, which we increased there. Our plan for reduction, first, we had to identify drug abuse, and it's also considered a behavioral health crisis. There's always something behind why they're doing what they're doing, and we can give them those services as well. We'll work in conjunction with services, local public services, Stanley County Health Department, Monarch, Will's place, and other peer support specialists. We'll develop hands-on strategies to combat the opioid problem, which we have done. We're doing that with policies, procedures, training, and training goes pretty much countywide. What will it do? It decreases the strain on law enforcement, our responders, by reducing the repeat overdoses, we hope. Start the recovery process for people addicted to opioids by providing the medical assistance treatment and peer services contracted through local agencies. Community paramedic and behavioral health crisis response provides triage assessment and immediate help crisis needs. On-site intervention is the main thing. We can do it then, so if we go out, if they won't help, we can give them that help then. If they do not want our help, we can educate them where they can. As many times we leave them with that education, leave them that material, it may be days or weeks later, they'll pick it up and call. Medication administration by protocol. Other patients who did receive medication, 17% took Suboxone for roughly four months. They had a 40% lower death rate after one year as compared to those who did not take any medication. The assessment will include evaluation of individual's medical stability, mental status, and risk to harm to self or others. On-site intervention may include verbal de-escalation in support of interview to identify the individual's existing supports, including crisis plans, supportive family, friends, and other involved professionals. This is one of our algorithms that we have already started and met with local departments and the peers, and we've kind of created this on how are we going to do it once we get on the scene, and they've got, they've had an overdose, we've got them back, where do we go from here? And this is the algorithm that we have begun so far. Referrals will be based upon the assessment and the pathways to access care is mutually agreed upon with contract between our LME and MCO and Stanley County EMS, meaning Monarch or the peers, where do we need to go? Needed transportation to non-emergency department, either via specially designated vehicle, ambulance, ever how we can get them there. So if we got a bed open for them, that we can get them straight to that facility, we'll facilitate it and make sure it gets there. I believe even in the second year, I think we'll be able to work out vouchers to give them, whether it be taxi, Uber, whoever, to get them where they need to go. So what's our next steps? We're in the process of working on that grant, that grant contract to bring it back to you. I believe you've got probably a rough copy of it already that we attached for you to look at and do the consent for the contract. Appoint community paramedics, which we've already gone through that interview process now. A lot of training is coming up. That's in conjunction with us, local departments, sheriff, APD. Secure our equipment, finish developing protocols and policies, and then implement a full program. Any questions on the program at all?
Questions from board members? I don't think we have anything to approve tonight. It's still with the county attorney's, my understanding?
Yeah, the county attorney will review the contract, you know, once we get it finalized from the Blue Cross and Blue Shield. At that point, we'll come back and do a budget amendment for the, recognize the funds and the funds and the expense side of the grant. So at that point, you'll be approving the dollars and the positions, if there are positions associated with it, which I believe there are. And then, obviously, you all know, you know, the board knows that these are temporary grant funds, and, you know, if the program doesn't develop and doesn't have a return on investment, then the board will have to make decisions on what we're, if we don't get, if it doesn't continue to get grant funding, decisions based on whether you continue to do the program or not, so.
Great.
Those folks know that upfront, and so at some point in the next, I would think, within the next month, we'll be bringing back a budget amendment to recognize the, recognize the funds and the positions, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item number four on the agenda tonight is a rezoning request. Mr. Bob Rensberg will be the presenter.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good to see you this evening. We do have one request, and I'll get the PowerPoint loaded up here. All right, so from, we have one request from Mr. Benny Robertson on 444-57 Leadbetter Road, and the request is to rezone a seven-acre tract that he has there from RA Residential Agricultural to M2, which is heavy manufacturing. And I'll explain why the request is for something that great a change. If you've read through your packet, you know the basic idea is that there's a, Mr. Robertson has the property, and he has become, has acquired a number of vehicles that are inoperable that he's placed on that property, and the only location in, or only way in Stanley County you can have more than one inoperable vehicle on a property, really, is in the M2 district, and that still has to be enclosed with a 10-foot-high solid fence. Mr. Robertson has approximately 35 inoperable vehicles on his property. He's expressed a willingness to construct a solid fence to keep them hidden. He's sought other locations for this business, but has been unsuccessful, other than a few cars that he has gotten stored in an unused poultry house elsewhere in the county, and that's permissible. The zoning change would cause the home to be a non-conforming use if we did do this, and non-conforming use may continue unless the use is abated for a period of six months or longer. One option may be to negotiate a conditional use rezoning or somehow to reduce the size of this from the seven acres. Department of Transportation doesn't have any traffic data on Leadbetter Road, and I'll give you an idea of where this is. Here's Leadbetter Road on our map. You can see Fish Camp Road coming off of 740 as well. Notice that the areas around this is zoned County RA, the light green color. The bright green color is New London's zoning jurisdiction, and it's also zoned RA, a little county highway business down far on 740 as you head toward Baton. And this is an overview of the property. You can see, even though this overview was made in about 2015, or early 2015, you can see the, some of the cars and things in place, boats and a couple of campers at that point. Also, I think I've got one more here, takes it a little further out. The uses around it, of course, primarily either agricultural or residential is the zoning, however, there's also Bethel Methodist Church, which is located at the corner of 740 and Leadbetter Road, and you can see the cemetery stretching back toward Mr. Robertson's property. There is an open zoning violation case on the property due to the open storage of inoperable fines, inoperable vehicles. Fines due to the county, the amount of $1,750 are currently pending, however, all this is on hold until this rezoning case is considered by you. Planning staff sees the rezoning as a possible solution to our violation situation, however, this also being located, surrounded by RA zoning could be considered spot zoning. Leadbetter Road is rural and residential, is currently developed, and the 2010 land use plan adopted by the county commissioners at that point labels this as a sustainability area, and of course, that calls for it to be low-density residential development at one dwelling per acre and having farmland and agribusiness protection as its highest priority. It discourages non-agricultural and even discourages substantial residential development. If the Board of Commissioners wishes to rezon this, as has been requested, it would be advisable to amend the land use plan to reflect what you view this as a, to view this as a growth area instead of a sustainability area. Without the rezoning, Mr. Robertson will have to remove the vehicles, and let me go through a couple of other slides here, and I think you've seen some of the pictures potentially. So this is a view from Leadbetter Road, looking toward the house and the driveway. Get another view, kind of off the driveway entrance there, and another view a little closer up. As I mentioned, I think in the notes, the house burned a number of years ago, had a fire, and that has not been repaired, so you can see that section of the house that burned in this view, and the various vehicles there. Depends on where you're at on Leadbetter Road and whether the vegetation is, whether it's summer or winter, how much you can see this. This is a little further up Leadbetter Road, there's another driveway entrance sort of to his property. If that gives you an idea, I believe that's the end of the slides there, yep. So I think that pretty much, the planning board did review this, of course, and they did vote to recommend that this be denied when they reviewed it at their meeting on February 11th. And I believe that's sufficient. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions from the Commissioners?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, Mr. Burme.
Without going through a rezoning area, is there any way that this could be cleaned up and kept from sight and be able to work with the man on this, or is this something that you have to have a rezoning to do?
Well, the, we've been, there's been a zoning violation case, started approximately a year ago. I'm going to look back at Mr. Swerengen, and he's going to nod his head, I think, on that. All right. So we've been dealing with this for about a year to attempt to mitigate the issue, and really, in our zoning, in the RA district, in the county zoning ordinance, you are allowed, one, unlicensed vehicle on a property, inoperable, unlicensed, whatever the case may be, and no more. So they're really, all the way from RA, all the way up to the most intense zoning, which is M2, you know, there's no outside storage of unlicensed vehicles allowed. So again, we've been working with him to try to get him to move and find a piece of property or something that's appropriate for these to be located on, and that has not happened at this point.
Any other questions? If not... Yes, sir?
Approximately 35 cars, some vehicles there now, boats, vans, campers, sedans, trucks. How long have these been accrued?
Mr. Swearingen, do you want to address that?
What was the answer to that, Mr. Chairman? I couldn't hear very well.
We're getting another expert.
My name is Tim Swearingen. I'm the zoning officer, and Mr. Sandy, the former planning director, passed on the complaint form to me on December the 7th of 2017. At that time, there was 12 or 13 cars on the property. We did our investigations, sent them an initial notice, got no response, sent a notice of violation certified mail, still no response. Then the case was turned over to the county attorney for her letter of warning. At that time, he did call and try to ask what to do to rectify the problem. And at that time, I told him, you know, they needed to go. And he didn't do anything else as far as trying to, to abate the violation. In fact, the number of cars increased over the next several months. He did come in and talk with Michael Sandy a couple of times. I think it's my understanding, he did call the county attorney, I believe, at one point and spoke with her. And also, I think he has spoken to the county manager and maybe one or two of the commissioners that were on the board at different times last year. So, but as far as abating the violation or either a rezoning, it would be his only two choices to rectify the problem.
How many cars are on site now?
The last time I was up there was about two weeks ago, and there was 34, 35, best I could tell. I could, I didn't go on to the property, just observing from the street. There was approximately 35.
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open. Anybody that is here to speak for or against this zoning, rezoning, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Dwight Chandler. I'm chairman of the trustees for Bethel United Methodist Church. I presented a petition to the planning board at the last meeting with about 30, with 38 or 40 names on it against rezoning this for this going on. Because if he gets it rezoned, there's gonna be noise there. We have funerals going on year-round there, hopefully not a lot, but they still gonna happen. And the church is definitely against it. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak for or against?
My name is Jimmy Whitley. I own approximately 78 acres on Fish Camp Road that joins this property on the west side. And we raise cattle. It's cattle farm, raise hay. Mr. Alman knows my son, Kelly. And the property values since about 2008 have declined, where the land up around on Fish Camp Road was approximately worth about $10,000 an acre. Right now, the last count I had, a realtor told me, is about $6,500 an acre. And this right here is a salvage yard. Now, I can stand in my living room, I own three houses, the first three houses on Fish Camp Road. I can stand in my bedroom, and I can see the backside of this property. And right now, I can look through the trees, and I can see, see the cars piled up in there. Most of them are right on Leadbetter Road, but I can still see through the trees. And with the, with the rules and everything, if he puts up a fence, I'm gonna be looking at a fence around a salvage yard. So I am strongly against this rezoning. Does anybody have any?
Any questions? I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. Whitley.
Thank you.
Any other speakers for or against?
Yeah, my name's Doug Whitley. I live right, I live atop a hill. I get past that property every day, and it looks bad now. But if you rezon it, I figure it'd look worse. But for the community and the neighbors, I think it ought to stay like it is, residential area. Because my neighbor right across the street, we just, he just spent $300, he got seeders around his property. He keeps them trimmed and nice every, every year. But I think for the community, it ought to stay residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak for or against this rezoning request? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Law. Morgan, Morgan.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny the rezoning request at this time and give Mr. Robertson a 30-day grace period without penalties to get the vehicles off. Let me redo my motion. Okay, so I'm making a motion, we deny the rezoning request. The justification would be the property is in a sustainability area per the 2010 land use plan, and that the rezoning may be considered spot zoning. Also, in my motion, I say we give Mr. Robertson a 30-day grace period where no penalties are assessed during that time, starting from tonight. And then after 30 days, the penalties will reassess, will start back.
All right, there's a motion to deny the request this evening based on the fact that it's in a sustainability area per the county land use plan. Is there a second? The second by Commissioner Farr. Is there any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Commissioner Morgan's motion would prevent accumulation of any more penalties for 30 days. Would they abate any existing penalties? And what are the existing penalties?
The previous penalties would still be enforceable, just penalties starting from tonight for 30 days.
Mr. Rensberg, what were the, what are the previous accumulated penalties? That was another part of that question.
Apparently, Mr. Robertson has paid $250 toward that. The total was $1,750, so it would be $1,500 is what's still due.
Commissioner Jordan, he still owes $1,500 of a $1,750 penalty. So he has made partial payment.
With my debt due, given the opportunity, I'd like to pay it to my page. I want the air on the side of the property. And again, I also understand that this is a neighborhood that, that property is considered purpose, which is not what the neighborhood wants. I support denying the request. Would anyone support me in saying that we could, as a show of compassion, waive the existing penalties? If he does, get them all off the property in 30 days?
Are you going to make that in the form of an amendment, Commissioner Jordan? There is a motion on the, on the floor that has been made with a second, so any change to that would have to be amended. I'm gonna take a brief moment to defer to council.
Okay, then I, I withdraw my request and just ask that we continue on with the motion.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the floor to deny the request. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, that brings us to item number five tonight, the planning board appointments. Again, Mr. Bob Rensberg.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman. And just, you may be thinking, didn't we just do this? Because we did, sort of. Regretfully, the planning department and, we were late last year. We're on time this year. I guess I'll put it that way, because our appointments should have happened for the planning board pretty much in February or March of each year. That's, that's the calendar that we're on. So I apologize that last year, we were behind the eight ball and didn't get it done, didn't get it to you with recommendations or what have you until late. And then, of course, because of the changing commissioners, we delayed it a couple of months. And so we ended up just appointing some folks to the board, and here we are back again with the situation, because we have some that are rotating off now. So the, the desire is, we need to appoint one new planning board member, and we, of course, have several volunteer applications for that. And there are two board members that are eligible for reappointment if you so choose. Of course, it's up to you as a board to do that. That would be John Ekman and Frank Sparger, who are eligible for reappointment. But again, three positions that would serve until February of 2022. And I did note that Kevin Brickman had served in the past, but all the other volunteer applications are for folks that have not served on this particular board before. So it's your pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Rensberg. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint John Ekman and to appoint Candace Brazington and Joel Malden for the planning board.
All right, there is a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Ekman and Mr. Malden and Ms. Brazington to the planning board. Is there any other discussion on that? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number six will be the enhanced voluntary agricultural districts. Presenter, Ms. Lori Ivey.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners and staff. I'm here today on behalf of the voluntary ag district board. The board met on February 13th to approve the following applications. First, I'll talk about enhanced voluntary ag district. I did give Tyler a brochure about voluntary ag district. I know we have some new commissioners, and this may be new to you, so I wanted to make sure you had some information on voluntary ag district. The enhanced voluntary ag district, when an applicant enters into that, they agree to keep their farm in the enhanced program for a minimum of 10 years. It is renewable at the end of 10 years for an additional 10 years. And the application we have for the enhanced voluntary ag, enhanced voluntary ag district is for Donald Meisenheimer. And there are a number of properties that are included in this application. Do you want me to go through? Okay, you have the maps and the tax map and parcel number and the number of acres. It is 409 acres, 409.47 acres.
Thank you, Ms. Ivey. Are there any questions from the board about the enhanced agricultural districts? If not, what's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Commissioner Barbie, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number seven, Ms. Ivey.
Okay, and in front of you, you have several applications for voluntary ag district. Many of the same benefits apply to farmers that enhance, enhance is just an enhanced level. The difference is, this is a 30-day-in, 30-day-out application. So if a farmer decides he doesn't want to be in VAD, he just does a 30-day notice. You have applications for Michael Douglas Bowers, and there are four different addresses there, 202 acres. Thurman Burleson and Sons. And there's a lot of maps and a lot of parcels there, and it's a total of 1,252.37 acres. Nayland Ray Eford, and there are four different addresses, a total of 147 acre, 147.23 acres. Billy Franklin Lee. And again, there are two pages with the street addresses and maps, a total of 1,068.12 acres. And Chester and Patricia Lewis, there are three different addresses there, a total of 152.57 acres. And the last application is David A. Underwood, and there are three parcels. The fourth address is not included and has been omitted from the application for a total of 180.25 acres.
Ms. Ivey, I have a quick question. I'm assuming this is Donald Meisenheimer. Did he have an application for both?
He has an application for both. That's correct.
I just missed his name. I'm sorry. All right, what's the pleasure of the board? Is there any questions for Ms. Ivey on those? What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman.
Commissioner Lawhan.
I make a motion for the approval of the voluntary agricultural district applicants that have been discussed.
Motion by Commissioner Lawhan, a second by Commissioner Barbie, to approve the voluntary agricultural district applications as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
And if I can just give one addition, a little bit of additional information that was discussed at our last board meeting. The ag advisory board discussed the development of a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, to be entered into with cities and/or municipalities within Stanley County. The board has had, to my knowledge, one application. We had a second person in the 15, 16 years I've worked, who has applied for VAD that is within a municipality. And the board decided at this time, and they've discussed it at the last two or three meetings, they voted to not seek an MOU with cities and/or municipalities within Stanley County at this time. So I did want to bring that information to you. So I did want to bring that information to you as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number eight tonight is the 2018-19 audit. Presenter, Mr. Toby Henson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. North Carolina general statute number 159-34 says that the governing board has to select or approve the auditing firm that will perform each annual independent audit. I have been in contact with Mr. Alan Thompson, with Thompson Price, Scott and Adams, and that's who's done our audit for the past two years. And he has agreed to, for them to, that they would perform our 18-19 audit at the same price as what they've done for the previous two years. Again, we have, our first year we used them was in fiscal year 1617. And it's normally how it goes the first year with a new auditing firm. Wasn't quite as smooth as what it normally goes, but it, I think, went about as well as it could be for, to have a new firm doing the audit. Last year, things were going along very well in a very timely manner. And Hurricane Florence came about, and it did a lot of damage to their offices in Whiteville. And, but they had a very quick recovery period, and everything still got done in a timely manner. The audit got to the LGC on time, and Alan himself was here. Mr. Thompson was here to present the audit the first of December. So with that, and they have picked up, they are doing a few more, a couple more counties now than what they were even back in 2015, where some auditing firms are trying to reduce the amount of counties they have. This firm has been adding probably three or four counties to what they used to. So with the price being the same and them doing a good job last year, I would recommend that we use them for the 18-19 audit.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Are any questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams and company to perform the fiscal year 2018-19 audit.
There's a motion to approve the recommendation by Commissioner Almond, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the consent agenda. I believe there was one edit that a few folks wanted to make to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
Just in the general minutes, I'd like to make an amendment showing that Commissioner Lawhan was appointed to the Cardinal Innovations Board. There's nothing stating who we vote.
Just point of clarification, that's item number five from the agenda, or the minutes from two weeks ago. It has down that we voted in the affirmative, but it just doesn't list Commissioner Lawhan specifically. So we'll make that change. All right? There's no objection to that, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. That brings us to public comment. Is there anybody, I think the list I had was exhausted by speakers for the public hearing. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak at this time? All right, we'll move on to board comments, announcements and committee reports. We'll start with Commissioner Farr.
Big thing I'd like to say at this time, I'd like to thank everyone from the EMS for the job that they're doing. What they're gonna be doing on the opioids and that part, I gotta commend them, and I thank them very much.
I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Farr said. Just that we appreciate the efforts that the EMS are doing in our county. Second, I had a library board meeting this past Wednesday, and they have trivia night on March seventh, six o'clock, at Tiffany's Downtown. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Almond. Commissioner Morgan.
I too would just like to echo the previous commissioners thanking the EMS for all the hard work they do.
Mr. Lawhan.
I appreciate being appointed to the Cardinal Commissioner Advisory Board, and I can tell you, I went last Thursday and I learned the duties. And the main duties of that board, we only meet basically two times a year, but the main duties are to appoint directors to the big board, executive board, which requires eleven of the twenty members of the advisory board to be able to appoint those folks to the executive board. We also have the right to remove a director from the executive board if there's cause to do so. I did ask the question about attendance, and they are required to attend, the Cardinal big boards are required to attend meetings, and if they miss three meetings, consecutive meetings, then they are automatically removed from that board. So I did go as the appointed commissioner to attend that meeting, and I just wanted to let you know, that's basically what we do on that advisory board. The fun part that I got to do was, on Monday, February 25th, I attended the Stanley County Water, Soil and Water Conservation District Annual Banquet. And I think this might have been my third or fourth time attending. And I always enjoy attending, because there's a lot of young students that are recognized. Rita Little, who does the presentation, she's the education coordinator for the Stanley County Soil and Water Conservation Board. And I want to tell you, there was third grade poster contest, and Indy Elementary School was the winner, was the first place winner, with Matthew Cheney, a fine young man in the third grade. There was a fifth grade poster contest, and first place went to Camden Brown of Baden Elementary School. And there was a sixth grade poster contest on water and soil conservation. And Lindy Barrett from North Stanley Middle School won first place. And then there was a sixth grade essay contest, and the first place winner was, and I may, I'm probably gonna murder this name, Estefani LaGrasse-Ramos won that. And she was from the Albemarle Middle School. And then we had a sixth grade slideshow on soil conservation. And Jagger Dry from West Stanley Middle School won first place. Also, at this particular meeting, there's a Envirothon champion, state Envirothon champion. And the group from Stanley County went to the national Envirothon. And there were a lot of students, teams there from all over the United States. And you know, they always say, if you don't come in first place, you're the first place loser. Well, that may be true in some things, but not in this. This team from Stanley County ranked in the seventh place, which is good, because they were against a lot of other teams from, throughout the United States. And then the last thing I want to recognize, or last important thing to recognize, at these meetings, they always tell you who the conservation farm family winner will be for the year. And for 2018, it was Terry L. Blaylock Farms, who was down toward Cottonville. Terry's been in farming for a long, long time, and he and his family do a good job farming. Enjoyed the banquet. Y'all got a lot of information that I just gave you. But I encourage you, if you get invited to attend those, they're a fun banquet. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawhan. Mr. Barbie.
Well, I too want to thank the first responders and all the people that serve us in the county. And I had a, I won't go into detail, but the rezoning tonight was a tough decision. I've always been a firm believer in a person should be able to do what he wants to do on his own property. But I also realize that's without saying you can infringe on the rights of other people in that area. So I just feel a little bit of compassion for that, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbie. Commissioner Jordan, do you have any comments? Thank you. The only thing I would like to say is, I do hate I didn't get to attend the Soil and Water banquet. But they strangely have invited me to speak at the District Eight Soil and Water Meeting on Wednesday. I don't know why they wanted me to be the speaker, but I will be going to that on Wednesday. And it's our group from Stanley County, everybody that Commissioner Lawhan, or some of the ones that Commissioner Lawhan recognized, along with about ten other counties, I believe, kind of all come together, and Stanley County's hosting that event this year. Mainly because the president of that group, the district group, is actually a farmer here in the county. So I think that'll be fun. I'm interested to go and have breakfast and meet all these folks and do my best to talk about soil and water conservation. So other than that, that's all I have this evening. If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, is there a second? Lots of seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.